December 3rd, council meeting in order. Mr. Taylor, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lees, would you do the roll call, please?
Mr. Boyce, Mr. Hampton.
Here.
Mr. Jensen, Mr. Johnson, Mr. O'Connor.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Present.
Ms. Wiles.
Here.
Mr. Eyre.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of the November 26, 2019, meeting.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six zero.
Mr. President.
Approval of the agenda. Ms. Wiles.
I would like to amend the agenda and postpone item number 50-11-19 and the public hearing for ordinance number 50-11-19 to our December 17th meeting.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to postpone, or to amend the ordinance, postpone the ordinance 50, 11, 19 to the December 17th meeting. All those of committee devotee on the amendment and the public hearing, are voting on the amendment. All those in favor, raise your hand. And carries six zero.
Mr. President.
Ms. Wiles.
I'd make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six zero. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present, I have none. If someone would like to speak, there are comment cards out at the entryway. Please fill that out and hand it to the clerk, please. Mayors report to council. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, members of council. Not a lot going on. Obviously, holiday season. Had a outstanding tree lighting ceremony, the 27th, Friday night after Thanksgiving. Different entertainers. It was just a good, great turnout. And then the Christmas parade went on in the chill, if you will, on Sunday. Not a bad turnout considering the weather. But again, I'd like to compliment Robert Harrington, our police and fire, and that whole committee that's worked on that. That's not an easy task to put together. Upcoming, we have an employee open house for employees and their children with Santa on the fourth. Reception at Prevail, actually, it's former Michelle Correille with Prevail at the Embassy Suites. I have a couple pizza parties at elementary schools, and we are presenting the checks from Helping Hands or the Mayor's Charity Ball to those recipients on the 16th. So that's all I have. But Ally McGill is here to give you a report on the arts, cultural arts in the city. Ally?
Thank you, Mayor. For one thing, I have our new arts guides, so I'd like to hand them to you. Thank you so much. My name is Ailey McGill, and I'm from 107 South 8th Street here in Noblesville Nickelplate Arts. So part of our contract with the city includes needing to present to council twice a year, and we were here in June, so I'm back again just to give you a quick update on what we have talked about. And I have one really cool announcement that I am, that just happened today, so I'll get to that at the very end. Just to remind you, last time we talked about our annual report, which included our figures from 2018. Our 2019 numbers, since we're on a July to June fiscal year, will come out in the summer of 2020. We also talked about some of our big projects, one of which is Noble Made, the gift shop on the square at Connor Street, on Connor Street in the visitor's center. We also talked about the Arts Council's goals to focus on signature events and promotion of those events this year. We talked about some public art projects. The Arts Council wants to start identifying steps for a master plan and a master art plan as well, which we hope to do in conjunction with the various departments of the city. And then we made a pledge this year to visit the other nine cultural districts around the state, and as of today, we have officially done that. We went to Lafayette today. So just to remind you of the, why this discussion is so important, the arts have a huge economic impact. They generate $166.3 billion, or they did generate that in 2015, and so we know that number has only gone up. That's nationally. According to Americans for the Arts, the arts generate more economic income for the, they add more to the national economy than transportation, tourism, and agriculture. And it's also really important to know that jobs in the creative sector are really growing. They increased from 44 million in 2005 to 56 million people employed in the creative industries in 2017. The rate of creative class growth was more than double the growth rate of the overall U.S. workforce in that same period. So it's a really important part of our local economy. One of the main things I want to report on is Noble Made, since that was our biggest project this year. Our goal this year was to just sort of open the doors, see how many Noblesville creators and makers and artists we could include in that space, get some sense of what their products, you know, how people would react to a gift shop that's really focused on Noblesville products, and just collect some data this year, see what happened. We, I'm happy to say that at this point, we've had more than 80 vendors participate at Noble Made, and 72 of those have sold at least one item out of that shop. So that's a really huge sell-through rate. We've sold almost 1,000 items. It's 998. I almost wanted to go buy two things today so I could tell you, we sold 1,000 things. Our average transaction rate is $29.79, which I think is really interesting and is really helpful. That's data that's really helpful for creative entrepreneurs here to know kind of what, what that price range that consumers are looking for. Our gross sales to date are $11,846.37. We employ four people part-time. And just some other interesting things, we've had the least amount of sales on Thursdays and the most on Fridays. Saturdays are the days we have the most foot traffic, so if you think that through, lots of people are coming in but not buying stuff on Saturdays. And most of the sales occur between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m., which all of those are things we knew nothing about when we opened the shop, so it'll really help us shape our business plan for next year. You have the sheet before you too, if you want to see it in better detail, but it's stuck in the arts guide. So the yellow bars on this chart are Noble Made sales, and the orange bars are sales from our Nickelplate Arts campus here in Noblesville. And this is just sales revenue. It's not other things like at the Nickelplate Arts campus, we accept donations, we have program income. This is just art sales. So first of all, I think it's interesting to, you can kind of see the trends over the course of the year. Also, keep in mind, Noble Made, our test run back last year ran through the first week of January, so those tiny little sales in January of this year was the tail end of the holiday season, and then we were closed for February and half of March. So far, together between the two locations, we've sold over, what, $26,000 worth of art? And our sales trends at Nickelplate Arts in the past indicate that we'll bring in at least $5,000 this month in December, because it's prime holiday shopping season. And I think with two locations, you'll see that really rise. So, you know, for a test year, basically, our numbers at Nickelplate Arts have stayed on pace with last year. We've been able to prove that Noble Made did not rob sales from other locations. It's a whole new space. And in fact, it's really adding to the economic impact of the arts in Noblesville by almost doubling what we could do in the same period with just one location. So I also want to make sure that we talk about our visits to all the other cultural districts. We opened these trips up to everyone who is associated with the Arts Council in any way. Hopefully, you all received invitations from us multiple times to go. Each of the trips, we had anywhere from three to 15 people join us, including Rocky Wall's entire family went with us to one of the trips, and that was really fun to have kids go with us and explore as well. We've had some of the same people come over and over again, and then a few people just came on one trip or the other. But it's been really enriching for everyone who went on those trips to meet art leaders from around the state and to just see how other districts are doing it. Right now, each district is really unique, and it's kind of like comparing apples to oranges to potatoes. Like, they're really not similar in a lot of ways, but there are a lot of through plots about the challenges, about the things they've learned of engaging artists, that we are now processing all the data that we've gotten from those, and we're going to prepare a report for, we have to do it for the grant we've received from the state, but we will also share that with the city council and the other cultural districts as well, and hopefully continue to collaborate with them. I can tell you that as we've been visiting, Noblesville is really seen as a collaborative leader, so we're seen as a group that really values collaboration here in the city to get things done, and that we're also seen as somebody who can work well with the other cultural districts around the state. And again, that's really good for us, because it can allow us to leverage expertise from other areas and bring our artists and our leaders into those areas to be recognized as well. We also participated in the Indiana Arts Commission's annual conference, which they call their Arts Homecoming, in October, and I personally presented at two sessions. There were over 300 leaders, arts leaders from around the state at that, and I was in front of them talking about how great Noblesville is. And so it was really cool to be able to, again, be recognized on a statewide level for the things that we're doing here. Just to let you know, the cultural district goals for next year, we really want to focus on this art master plan and how it integrates into the rest of the comprehensive plan for the city to amplify the things that have already been agreed upon and planned for, and just to help set those priorities for what, what could we do with the arts to improve quality of life, improve economic development. Next year, we have some very specific details of things we want to do with the six major events that we've identified, not the least of which is, we're right in the middle of our holiday season now. The cultural district is working on promotion for all the events that we got told about that happened between Thanksgiving and this Saturday, basically. So we're really focusing on this week, but we know that each of our cultural amenities here in town have events that go all the way through really New Year's. And so we'll be continuing to promote those and working on connecting people, making sure that people are making use of the trolley to see all the stuff around downtown. That's just one example. But next year, we want to amplify that. We want to take what we've learned this year and really help make things more efficient, but then also really enrich experiences for people who come to visit Noblesville or residents who want to make the most of their time downtown. And then we're really excited about looking forward to Valentine's Day next year and applying these things we've learned, really working with merchants, to spread some Valentine's Day experiences around the downtown square that go beyond, of course, we love the restaurants and any promotions they may be doing, but we can add some arts experiences to enrich that as well. At Noble Made, the big thing we want to do next year is add an art of business training component to it. To, now that we have some data, we can start feeding that to artists. We can help them tailor products. We also think we have some opportunities for them to do some product testing in conjunction with the chamber and some other resources that we have in town, and we've been working on building funding for that. So we're excited to take Noble Made from just being a retail outlet to being really kind of a creative entrepreneurial incubator. Next year will be one step towards that goal. And then public art, we have some big goals. We are working on the alley archway designs. That just got approved by, the contract for an artist got approved by Board of Works this morning, so we're going to start that process of getting archways that can really be an iconic, just an icon in downtown Noblesville to help you know where you are, help you make the most of those alley spaces. We are also working, I'm working with the planning department on an asphalt art grant, which there is such a thing. They, it's through Bloomberg, and we're hoping that we could get $25,000 to do some bands that would have some permanent artwork in the roads instead of just things painted onto the road surface. And we're working in conjunction with departments and the downtown district committee to make sure that, you know, that actually makes sense and fits in with other plans. And then the thing I'm most excited about, the big news is, Seminary Park Archway, today, just today, got put in. I wasn't even around to see it. I got this as a text today. But this has been a lovely project and a wonderful process. You know, Brandon and his team at Parks have done a wonderful job with Seminary Park, and we were so excited to be able to apply our expertise to get this really iconic entryway. I think it fits the feel of the park really well, and it was made by a Noblesville high school graduate, Kevin Huff. His family still lives here on Logan Street. He lives just across the border in Westfield. We'll try to get him to move back. But he, you know, it's just wonderful from start to finish to have that here, and it gives us a great springboard for these downtown archways that we want to have evoke the same feel but be unique in and of themselves. So I could tell you lots more, but that's probably enough for today, unless you have questions.
Questions? Well, thank you. Great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Come, come do stuff for the holidays in downtown. We've got 12 days worth of stuff.
Ally does a great, great job with Nickelplate Arts and the whole arts industry. A reminder also, there is a ribbon cutting at Seminary Park on Friday at 6:00, I believe, to celebrate the new Seminary Park.
5:45 ribbon cutting, and 6:00 you're going to flip a switch with the lights, I believe, to turn the lights on over the park.
Yeah, right.
So yeah, it should be a great asset. It looks good right now, but.
I think it looks great, and I had not seen the archway.
I had not.
I was actually driving north, and they were installing it. I'm like, yes, awesome. It's in.
Anything else? Any questions to me? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council committee reports.
Mr. President.
Ms. Wiles.
The Finance Committee met last Wednesday, and we had, we discussed several items which are on our agenda this evening, so instead of repeating that, I will just defer. However, I will say that the claims do come to the council with a recommendation from the Finance Committee.
With that approval, any other committee reports? With that approval of claims?
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the claims. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six zero. New ordinances for discussion. Council consider ordinance 52-12-19, and ordinance, amending ordinance number 1381, and number 1003-04, and section 34.08 of the Code of Ordinances of the City concerning fees and policies for Riverside Cemetery. Ms. Lees.
Moved and introduced.
Second.
Ms. Lees. This is yours. I don't know that I've ever seen an ordinance with a number 1381.
In the older days, yeah. They, they, they didn't make it to 2000. I think, I think the 1300s was, no, 1400s is about where it started, and then we got started on our current system of naming ordinances, which works a little better.
A little easier.
Yeah.
That does predate me a couple of years.
So the, for those who don't know, I do manage Riverside Cemetery on behalf of the Board of Works, which is the trustees of Riverside Cemetery. This count, this ordinance comes before you because it deals with fees. The fees in Riverside Cemetery have not been changed in 15 years. This year, we ordered a columbarium for cremation niches, which is due to be delivered on the 29th. So it, it became more of a front burner issue to get the fees updated for the cemetery, because we needed to also establish fees for the cremation niches. Because it's been so long since the fees have been adjusted, they are far, far below nearby cemeteries. Rather than make a huge shocking leap to catch them up, we have doubled the fees to purchase plots and for opening and closing, and then, you know, hopefully in a year or two, we can make another jump. I think a stepped approach is a little easier to digest. We have simplified the opening and closing fees. In your packet materials, they're, the old ordinance is there. And we took our current practices, which have been in place since before I was here, and finally got them into writing, which is the wise thing to do. The only really new thing in here to go along with the cremation niches is because we will not be expanding this cemetery, we still have plenty of graves left, but to, to be wise managers of that, there is a provision which would exclude buying a burial plot strictly for cremations, since we have, will have a columbarium for cremations. It will be installed just east of the Veterans Memorial. It'll be easily access, accessible from the north side of the cemetery. We're going to have benches there, so I think it'll be a really nice addition to the cemetery. But that's, that is the ordinance in a nutshell. It has been reviewed by Mr. Howard. It was presented to the Finance Committee last week, and I very much appreciated their input, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Lees? With that, we'll hear you again in two weeks. Thank you. Council consider ordinance 53-12- Council Consider Ordinance 53-12-19, an ordinance for a change of zoning from R1 and FH to R2 and FH for approximately 21.84 acres for the property located at 1102 East 166th Street in Noblesville Township. Ms. Ashelman.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Sorry, I'm doing my technology change here. And it doesn't look like it's going to cooperate. Okay, I'm going to be relatively brief on this. This particular application with just two main changes was before you, almost exactly a year ago. The two major changes, one of the holdups, the previous time this was heard, is the petitioner did not plan to put the passing blister in 166th Street. They had actually asked for a waiver. They have come back this time with the intention of installing the passing blister. The other major change that has happened with this is, originally it had come through as a, proposed as a custom home subdivision. The developer has actually found a builder that would like to build in this neighborhood, and Dries Homes would be the builder in the neighborhood. They have gone to ARB. All their elevations have been reviewed. And these are just some examples of the types of homes that would be built in the area. So those are the two major changes. If you need me to, I can go through some of the more detailed parts of the plan development, but the basic premise of the request stays the same. They are removing a portion of the property from the floodplain, but because currently the floodline runs through these last four lots, they still plan to have more than half the property remain in the floodplain, and they are doing compensatory storage. So for every cubic yard of fill that they put in, they have to take three cubic yards of fill out of the floodplain adjacent. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them. This did come to you from the Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation.
Any questions?
Mr. President.
O'Connor.
Is, my recollection, I think there was some conversation with the Stony Creek Golf Course folks, and I don't know if there's been anything new there, or if all those issues were resolved.
They had reached, they had reached a resolution that involves some additional landscaping because they are directly adjacent to the fourth hole. And I believe the petitioner's representative can address this more clearly. They're also going to put a covenant restriction or deed restriction, letting them know that they are adjacent to a golf course.
They're in the firing line.
Yeah, they're, they're in the firing line, basically, and they're, they're, they're at their own risk. But they are, they have included as part of this petition the agreement that they had reached with Stony Creek Golf Club at the time.
Just one more, Mr. President. What's the minimum house or housing square footage in here?
That actually did drop in this one. Previously, they had a 3,000-something. They would be allowed an 1,800-square-foot house. I believe they only have one elevation that's close to that size, so... But that meets the R2 standard in the UDO.
And ARB, did we address a limitation of numbers of that elevation? Do you remember? I don't remember.
Honestly, it was two months ago. I'm not 100% certain.
They had a limit on the number of ranches, I believe.
Oh, we, we did during, but I can't, I just don't...
I think you might have. Yeah. We'll let the petitioner address that. They remember a little better than I do right now.
And then any waivers that were intact on, during ARB? I believe that on the border lots of 166th Street and along the golf course, we, we increased some standards?
It was just along 166th Street, but they, they committed to three corner breaks, some gable end treatments, and/or a knee wall.
Is it lots 1 through 6 and 27?
1 through 6 and 27, yes.
Right.
No, you guys, you did that on the next one.
But, Mr. President, but no enhancements for any of the houses that are along the golf course?
No additional enhancements. There is some additional landscaping on those particular houses.
Nothing to the house itself, just the landscaping?
No. I believe they have a mound there as well, along the golf course. Is that correct?
Other questions? Would you like to hear from the petitioner?
Please.
Mr. Worth?
She took it away, I'll put that. Good evening, Andy Worth, Land Use Professional with Churchill Shill and Antrim, offices here at 2 North 9th Street in Noblesville. Here tonight on behalf of Mina Corey with Triad Group LLC. Yes, we were before you last year. We've really ended up withdrawing that to reevaluate our costs and also the market. So the biggest change, as Denise indicated, is the, is the builder, and we're proud to have Dries Homes as a featured builder in this. Land currently undeveloped, save a small barn on the property, which will be removed. We are proposing, again, 27 lots. Also unchanged is the, the filling of the 1.4 acres of flood fringe. And we've learned that we both had to go through a variance procedure with the County Drainage Board, and Christopher Burke will be looking at the construction plans and quite a bit of detail on that. Just basically, it's, it's a variance, but it's a drainage board variance, so it's, they're really just looking to make sure the county standards are, are intact and are being solidly reflected in the engineering plans. In addition to the, the cut and fill project, we have reached an agreement with a third party for wetland mitigation to occur in the floodplain of our property, so we will actually be creating permanently protected wetlands in the area of Stony Creek that will, that is now and will remain in the floodplain. Regarding the homes, as Denise mentioned, we had a favorable review from the ARB. We did commit to some, some additional conditions. All the secondary elevations, we'll either have a gable treatment or a Masonly Wayne Scott, at least 24 inches up. All the homes will have, will have as options, a three-car garage, side load garage, and decorative garage door. We did hold a neighborhood meeting on 24th of October. Mr. Taylor from Stony Creek Golf Club was there, to your, to your question, Mr. Connor. You may recall from the petition last year, that, that number four fairway does get pretty close to our common property line. And we had reached an agreement with the owners of Stony Creek to do basically two things, provide additional landscaping on that, on that, on our east property line. And I think that's reflected pretty well in our landscape plan. It's, it's actually an exhibit in the, in the PD ordinance. And the second thing we agreed to was to provide language and covenants of stony bluffs that basically recognize the existence of the golf course and the possibility of errant golf balls landing in rear yards there, and also releasing the golf course from any liability. So we're, I just want to make it, make it clear, we are still in agreement with that. We do intend to pursue annexation. We, we understand that's a condition of sewer availability, so we'll be working with staff here in the coming weeks to get that back in, back in the process. I'm going to stop here and let you ask questions. Other than that, we're just, we're pleased to offer another housing option to Noblesville.
Mr. Worth, on your, in your booklet that you provided me, under the architectural standards, under the Shellburn, which is the ranch, I don't see where there's a limitation that's built into that under the conditions. It'd be Tab 7, I believe.
And, I'm sorry, Mr. Worth, the question was what?
Shellburn, which is your ranch, your 1,800-square-foot product, I believe. Am I correct?
Yes.
I don't see where that limitation is built in as far as the number to be, that are allowed in that project.
Don, do you recall, six, we, we did make a commitment to six, no more than six in the total of that model, the total...
Can you build that into that, somewhere into the agreement? I, I don't see it in writing anywhere in here, I guess it was one...
Yeah, we're happy to add that to the exhibit, whatever...
Under Tab 7. As a result of the architectural...
I do recall that, that being discussed at ARB. So yeah, we'll, we'll make sure it's, it's reflected in the ordinance somehow.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. President, just one. Mr. Worth, will this, I assume there'll be a separate HOA for stony bluffs?
Yes.
I've just got to ask this because I'm looking at it. Is the detention pond going to be wet or dry?
It's, it's going to be wet, I believe.
Will it? Okay.
Any other questions? With that, we will see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council Consider Ordinance 54-12-19, an ordinance for a change of zoning from R2 and FH to R2-FH/PD, and adoption for a preliminary development plan for approximately 21.84 acres for property located at 11002 East 166th Street, Noblesville Township. Ms. Ashelman.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
It's moved in second. We read these at the same time previously.
Yes.
I didn't.
You didn't. But that's all right.
Any questions, Ms. Ashelman? Or the developer?
We need to show that separate one, it's in the...
They did, yeah, they introduced in second.
You did.
Yeah. All right, we will see you in two weeks on that. Council Consider Ordinance 55-12-19, an ordinance for a change of zoning from R1 to R1/PD, and the adoption of preliminary development plan for approximately 17.87 acres, and located west of Little Chicago Road and south of 191st Street in the city of Noblesville. We have a motion...
Motion to introduce.
Second.
It's moved in second. Ms. Yelton.
Good evening. This is a proposed plan development for the creation of a residential PD over an existing R1 zoning district. It currently contains approximately 17.87 acres. The planned development will be known as Schaefer Woods. Currently existing on, on the site, there is one residential structure that basically is in this area here. The other residential structure that exists here is not a part of the development. The request is for 31 new home lots, for a total of 32, because the one house that currently exists there will remain. The house, again, like I said, closest to the intersection, which is this house here, is not a part of the development. There are two common areas in this overall development plan. One is up here. In this area, there will be a small, I'm going to say, structure that will house, I'm going to say, any activity, games and stuff that they, you know, they have out in the area. And then also in this area here will be a fire pit with some additional evergreens being planted. There are areas, again, this is an existing tree line. Anything that you see in here in green is basically wooded area, and those areas are going to remain. Those areas will be put in a conservation easement. The area along here is the area where the storm sewer will be located. There is an existing tree line along here, but additional landscaping is being installed in this area. Along the east side, Little Chicago Road, we basically have a dry detention area here. The landscape buffer is here. Along this area here, there will not be a mound, but in this area here, there will be a mound created with additional landscaping. As you can see by this plan, there is a, a trail that will extend out to Little Chicago Road, again, to connect to our existing trail system. The right-of-way on this, on that adjacent parcel was a stipulation or a condition of the Plan Commission recommendation. Again, this shows the, the additional 40 feet of right-of-way that we will be obtaining from this piece of property prior to the issuance of any improvement location permit or any other permits. The applicants have worked very closely with our city engineering department. This is basically showing the improvements that will be along 191st Street, and again, they have been working with our engineering department. The applicant also has been before the Architectural Review Board. Dries Homes is basically the builder. They will be proposing what are known as patio homes, so these homes are either single-family or they're a story and a half. The ARB did review the elevations. They also reviewed their submitted architectural standards and basically did make a few minor modifications, which again is a part of the booklet that was submitted by the applicant. Bulk standards, including setbacks, minimum lot size, minimum house size, those have also, also been included, you know, with this development. At the Plan Commission meeting, we did have two remonstrators there, or I'm going to say concerned citizens. Staff did receive correspondence from an adjacent property owner that basically lived in, in this, in Conner Crossing here. I believe it was this, I want to say it was this lot here. Anyway, her concern was for the existing trees there. Since the Plan Commission meeting, I do know that they have gone out, the applicants have gone out and walked that area with her, and I believe that she is satisfied. I have not heard anything to the contrary from her. The other two gentlemen that spoke at the Plan Commission meeting were concerned about traffic design, the aesthetics, and the need for patio homes. Again, this type of home, proposed home, does meet part of our missing middle from our housing study and our comprehensive master plan. Waivers that are being proposed as part of this development included a reduction of the peripheral buffer long, buffer yard along the south line here. This has gone from 50 feet to 30 feet. Again, it is, there is, this is the area for the storm sewer. They are adding additional evergreen trees besides what is currently existing in this area. They're also asking for the elimination of shrubs along this area here as part of the peripheral landscaping buffer. They are asking that the dry detention area, which is this area right in here, be allowed to be within 50 feet of the right-of-way for Little Chicago Road. They're also, were requesting permission to install basically the sanitary, I'm sorry, storm sewer in this peripheral landscape buffer, and the reduction of the minimum corner lot size from what would be 30% of the smallest lot. It would be 30, the corner lot would be 30% larger than the smallest lot in, being proposed in this addition. The Plan Commission did hear this at their meeting. There were 10 members present. It was sent to you with a favorable recommendation. It was sent to you with a favorable recommendation for adoption of the preliminary development plan, the ordinance, the waivers, and the condition of the right-of-way being dedicated and recorded prior to the issuance of an improvement location permit. And with that, I will ask if you have any questions of staff.
Any questions, Ms. Yelton?
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
Ms. Yelton, can you add a little color to what this, is this a stone channel? You see down in the lower right-hand corner? It's got the dotted line. I think it says stone channel. Is that just a channel for the drainage to the detention pond? I'm just, I can't say I've seen stone channel before.
I will allow the, I'll let the applicants answer that question for you.
That's fine. And then there's, is there only one corner lot in the development?
Truly, there is only one corner lot, and that happens to be this lot right here.
And then the, will there be a path on the northern side of the development? I think I see eight-foot path, right?
Along 191st Street?
Yes.
Yes. It actually will connect into, basically, Conner Crossing here, and basically extend to where it currently is roughly in this location.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Yelton, you said that the city engineer has been reviewing this plan. It concerns me a little bit, looking at the entrance into this development so close to that roundabout at 191st and Little Chicago Road. Is the city engineer comfortable that cars can be able to turn left out of there and head west?
At the Plan Commission meeting and during, you know, our tack meetings and stuff, and the applicants have met separately with the engineering department, there has not been a concern about that. This entrance is pretty much pushed as far to the west as it can be pushed, and the city engineering department have had, seen no real conflicts as far as traffic movements go.
They're the professionals.
That's right.
Jim Hellman expressly at the Plan Commission stated, reviewed the passing blisters, the left-hand turn lanes, and all of those were more, and the site distances, which was a concern citizens talked about, and he was comfortable with all of those.
Okay.
Mr. Taylor.
Along those lines, I see down here that the, the left turn lane to the north to provide coordinated and safe access when such property ultimately develops, that seems like it's very open. When you say when it develops, when is, when is it developed? I mean, when are you planning on putting that in, rather than just, it's just open-ended? If you understand what I'm trying to say.
Being the left-hand turn that would serve the property to, on the north side of 191st, if it developed, when it develops?
Yeah.
It most likely would be put in by that development. It would not be needed but for that development.
But it would go in when that development took over. It wouldn't come back in front of us again.
I think that development.
It would be part of that petition and one of the mandated commitments.
Peterson.
The two remonstrators that spoke about the traffic on 191st Street, really, I felt like their motivation was more to get traffic to dump onto Little Chicago, really more than just the traffic overall. And I think the decision, at least from Mr. Hellman, was that needs to be a thoroughfare, and the less entrances we have onto that, the better, to maintain the integrity of that road. And he went into a lengthy session with the engineer speak about dumping on 191st Street, and really, there were a lot of questions came up about that, and he answered all of them, felt comfortable.
As you may recall, when this was originally introduced to the council before it went to the Plan Commission, they actually had proposed an entrance that went out to Little Chicago Road. That was a recommendation by the city engineer, or that that was not going to happen. Basically, Little Chicago Road is considered a primary arterial, so the least amount of conflicts we have, the better.
Any other questions, Mr. President?
What was the consideration for just a right, right-in, right-out? Was that discussed, and was this just a better plan?
It was discussed, and basically, the city engineer said absolutely no cut going to Little Chicago Road.
No, I mean there on 191st Street.
On 191st Street?
To try to turn left.
There has not been, there was really not ever any discussion about limiting that to a right-in, right-out.
Right here from the petitioner, Mr. Skelton.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, mayors, members of the council. I will try not to repeat anything that you've already covered with Joyce Ann, so this will be an abbreviated presentation. But the, just to, excuse me, oh, I'm sorry, Matt Skelton with Churchill and Antrim at 2 North 9th Street, offices here in downtown Noblesville. With me this evening is Neil Garradia and Ed Hamilton, also some members of the Dries, Marshall Berry, and Dawn Barnett with Dries Homes. We're here this evening requesting your consideration of our preliminary development plan, and the, really, I'll just skip down to the items that didn't get totally addressed here in your, your opening with Joyce Ann. The first is the 191st Street right-of-way dedication. We have been in communication with the owner of the parcel to the north, and we were comfortable with that condition. We reviewed that before the Plan Commission unanimous approval or recommendation, and we're fine with that commitment, and we think we can get that done. Secondly, I would note that on the 191st Street right-of-way improvements, as Joyce Ann mentioned, this is at your tab 11, if that helps, and I'll try to put it up here. I just want to highlight a couple of these improvements. This is, I think the engineering team was, was very satisfied with what we had come up with here, but essentially, you end up with a channelized left turn lane here into, this is the Schaefer Woods property right here. And so that the westbound traffic really is, doesn't have to veer off its course. It actually creates a safer, longer tapered, than like 60% longer of a taper for that left turn than the city's normal taper standards. But it allows that east, that westbound traffic to really not have to veer off course in order to continue west. Secondly, this helps to maintain higher service levels on the street, and it also has the effect of reducing the opportunity for incidents due to just basic human error, or God forbid, distracted driving. There's no car stopped in front of you that you have to veer around. You just keep going straight. And this is, and Mr. Taylor, you had inquired about when will the left, the designated left turn lane to the, to the north be installed? Essentially, this installs it, it would just have to be restriped. And so if you see this hatched area here, because there's no place to turn to go north, this is just simply a hashed area, but here, on this side, you can see how that's treated. So, it would just be treated the same way. The, the location of this entrance is at the highest point on 191st Street, and to the extent that there is ever a need for an extension to the north, this would be the place with the greatest visibility, both for east-west traffic and also for people entering or exiting both of those developments. That's kind of a plan for the future as well. We did have quite a few discussions with neighbors, and several of the items in your packets were included, just to kind of represent what we were able to do in those discussions. One of which, of course, Joyce Ann mentioned, was the, we walked the property line with our neighbor to the south down here, and we were going to be able to, really, there wasn't a whole lot that she was interested in keeping, but there were a couple of decent-sized trees, and we're fine keeping them. It really doesn't change what we'll be installing. It's just, in addition to what you see there, there will also be some other trees that remain. We also had had some discussions with folks that lived, for the most part, in this vicinity down here. Evidently, their yards do not drain very well today, and I don't know that it was a, I don't know if it was a bad installation, or just kind of the way the world works, but we're going to, we're going to be able to fix, like, most, if not all, of the situation by adding this storm inlet that's shown in your tab 12. It's kind of hard to see, I'm sorry. But there's a, there's kind of a, there's a storm inlet shown here in this corner, and a storm inlet shown in this corner, and we'll be able to capture what's naturally just gathering and holding there, and control the rate of runoff, and it shouldn't pool in people's backyards anymore. Or if it does, it shouldn't be nearly as bad as what it is today. Additionally, we had neighbor discussion regarding the amenity area. I think Joyce Ann already covered that. We've agreed to install some additional evergreens in the community gathering area and the fire, the fire pit area in the southwest corner. And then one of our Plan Commission members inquired as to what the, the amenity building structure would look like in the central amenity area, and we've incorporated a exhibit that reflects the quality and character of that. So, I, I will respond to your questions. I think we, if we're successful with this project here with you folks, we would intend to begin construction in the spring of 2020. We've reviewed, again, the staff report. We're fine with the conditions and agree with the conclusions, and happy to respond to any questions.
Questions for Mr. Skelton.
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
Mr. Skelton, I'm assuming the landscaping on the south end, is it going to be a grade?
I'm not understanding your question.
Will it be flat with the existing surface? You're not planning on burm-ing that, are you?
Actually, in, along the southern property line, it actually, the whole site kind of like steps down. It's not burred. The only burred location is this area here in the, kind of the southeastern corner, and that's really just more from a buffering stand, a buffering perspective from Little Chicago. And so I do have an exhibit that I can share with you that kind of shows the topographic dimension there. Yeah, this kind of shows it. So, this, this is Schaefer Woods here, and then it kind of comes down here. There's, the drainage is gathered here, and there's, we'll be installing new things here, and to the extent that there's anything preserved, it'll be here on the property line. And again, this is kind of preliminary. We don't have preliminary develop, I mean, our detailed development plan's done yet, but.
And then can, can you explain the stone channel? Is that exposed riprap, or what is it?
It's part of the low-impact design of that. It's supposed to be a naturalized, low-impact design. So, what it does is it, it prevents erosion, and it probably has some BMP qualities, right? It probably costs settling out of pollutants and things of that nature. But it's just, it's a way that the, the water, to the extent that there is anything that become, develops a channel, that prevents it from, like, cutting.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mr. Skelton? See you in two weeks.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President, just a comment, just to dovetail on Ms. Wilds and Mr. Peterson's discussion on the traffic flow and the exit into 191st Street, and then potentially you'll have a development on the north, which will probably happen at some point in the not-too-distant future. I'd, I'd like to have Mr. Hellman come in and give us his thoughts on that, because I'm a little concerned about traffic there, and given 191st Street and its ongoing use, and it's going to continue to get busier, and seems to me like you could turn right, go through the roundabout, and go back to the west. But having said that, I mean, as Ms. Wilds said, I'll rely on the experts, but I'd like to hear his commentary and why he thinks that's a good idea.
Hear that at the next meeting.
That'd be fine by me, assuming he can make it here.
We'll ask
Have to ask the engineer.
Planting staff to see if they can make that happen. I mean, I have the concern of 191st Street also, but, you know, we have State Route 32 and State Route 38 that are, that are right in that proximity, and.
And then we're doing roundabouts on those entrances for those subdivisions, so the same thing is going through my mind.
Right. But I think in the long term, we have to look at Westfield and try to get some cooperation to do something all the way out. That's become a, a shortcut to US 31 for a lot of residents.
We've talked about improvements on that road for several years, and we keep adding subdivisions, and I'd like to know where we're at on timeframe to improve that thoroughfare through there. Man, I know we got 32 and 38, as you well mentioned, but still, it's, it's time for us to look and at least get it on our schedule.
Right.
Yeah, and Mr. President, just to add on that, as someone who lives there in South Harbor, 38 is backed up, you know, to Whitcomb Ridge and to South Harbor almost every morning and every night. I know this is only, what, 30 homes, but adding to that thoroughfare.
You have that all over town? And 32 is backed up all the way to Hazelboro?
It is, I know, but I'm just saying we need to consider all of this as we add more.
Correct. I don't disagree at all. Well, let's see if we can get Mr. Hellman on the agenda to discuss this next meeting. Number one, Miss Lees, number one, council consider 2019 year-end encumbrances. Mr. Rexler.
Sir, if I'm going to get it all in there, I may get most of it in there.
Babe?
There's a lot there. Mr. President, members of council, I'm Heather Trexler from the Office of Finance and Accounting. Before you are encumbrances that we are requesting to take 2019 money into 2020. It's a, it's a big, it's a big list, but keeping in mind that these are all either items that have been ordered and have not been delivered, or these are signed contracts that we are in process and just have not finished the project. Mr. Spalding will be bringing to council in early 2020 a exact number of what this number is. Because of the timing and it being year-end, this number will, will drop. We will not take forward this full 4.9 million, but it still will be a large number, but we will have an exact number to come back to council early 2020. I am free to open, answer any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Trexler?
Mr. President, I'd just make a comment. I think the street, the largest number on there is related to resurfacing, I think, is it not?
Yes, it is the resurfacing contract of 2019 that we have not finished yet.
President, and again, just as a reminder, these are all items that we budgeted this year, it's just that we haven't expended these funds, so we're carrying it forward for next year. These are not additional appropriations to our budget.
And these are not the final numbers that are.
Correct. No, they will definitely be down. As a matter of fact, I know that there are some that we have, are, that are on tonight's docket, and will also be on the 17th docket, that they've just come in since these were brought, brought to us.
Any other questions?
President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I'd move that we approve miscellaneous number one, council consider 19 year-end encumbrances.
I second that.
And moved in second at the council to approve the 2019 year-end encumbrances. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 6-0. Miscellaneous number two, council received notice of the 2020 appointments. Ms. Lees.
Good evening again. This is
This is just in the interest of transparency, this is a notice of the council appointments that you need to make by the end of the year. You have one appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals, one to the Plan Commission, two to the Redevelopment Commission, and one three-year term to the Tree Board. And with your permission, we can put that on the agenda to vote on appointments at the next meeting.
Would it be helpful if we added who those, who are the people in those present spots?
Well, I think I know who most of them are.
Just for the next, just for the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, we'll put something together prior to the meeting to come up with some appointments and who's currently in the spots and if they're being reappointed. Any other comments or questions, Ms. Lees? Transfers, council consider transfer TA-21-19, an appropriation transfer in the general fund for the police department to realign expenditures and encumbrances for 2019. Ms. Burris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Berus is good. I think we got there, but yeah. Whatever you want to do. Not too picky. Mr. President, council members, this first transfer is the first of three resolutions to deal with realigning appropriation authority within the police department. So this one specifically deals with a couple issues within the general fund. So first and most prevalently, it deals with something related to the 911 dispatch fee that we pay to Hamilton County. We split that fee between the fire department's budget and the police department's budget. And effectively, what happened is when we actually started to get the bill for that this year, it ended up being higher than what was contemplated in the 2019 budget. And so the police department, for their share of the fee, is requesting an appropriation transfer of $100,000 from the personal services line of their budget to give them authority to pay the gap. And one thing I would point out with this is because of the recent lit increase that was approved, this fee isn't going to be something that we pay next year. So this is something we do have to clean up now, but it's not going to be an issue next year. So just keeping that in mind. This resolution also deals with $40,000 in equipment purchases and gives authority to buy those things by moving appropriation authority from the supplies line of their budget to the equipment line of their budget. So pretty standard transfer there. On this, I'm happy to take any questions. We also have Deputy Chief Brad Arnold here from the police department. So if there's any more specific questions on what's being spent and stuff like that, he may be of more help than myself.
Questions, Mr. Burris. I have a motion.
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I'd move that we approve transfer TA-21-19.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve transfer TA-21-19. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six zero. Council consider transfer TA-22-19, appropriation transfer in the parking meter fund for parking enforcement services.
Mr. President, council members, this is the second of those police department appropriation realignment resolutions, this time dealing with the parking meter fund. So again, there's a couple of things going on here, but the main thing by far relates to purchases of equipment and software for parking enforcement. So you may recall this issue coming up earlier this year. The police department came before the council and requested an additional appropriation to pay for this software and equipment. And what ended up happening was when the bill came due, it turned out that the appropriation authority that was granted by council wasn't enough to actually pay the full amount of the bill. So this is the police department coming back and asking for additional appropriation authority to cover the rest of that payment. Now, this time, instead of doing an additional appropriation, there was another issue where the street department came to council and got $55,000 appropriated for parking lot resurfacing. Now, that resurfacing has been done, so it's not that it didn't happen, but what happened was it was spent out of a different fund. So that appropriation is still sitting there unused. So we're transferring that spending authority over to the police department to cover the cost of the parking enforcement items. And that's mostly what's going on. There's another $3,500 chunk that's a pretty straightforward realignment within the police department budget between the, between the 300s, between the 100 series and the 400 series. And with that, I'm happy to take questions.
Any questions? Mr. Peterson.
The temporary parking space rental cost, is that the KeyBank lot?
Yes, I believe it is, and that's just for the rest of the calendar year.
Just this calendar, okay.
Yeah.
Mr. O'Connor.
Make a motion, we approve transfer TA-22-19.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve transfer TA-22-19. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six zero. Council consider transfer TA-23-19, appropriation transfer in the promotional fund for the police department to realign appropriations with expenditures for 2019. Mr. Burris.
Council members, this is the third and final of the police department-related transfer resolutions. This one is the most straightforward. It is just an issue where certain purchases were initially budgeted as 200 series supplies and after subsequent discussions, it was determined that it was more appropriate for those to be paid out of the 300 line. So this is just aligning appropriation authority with where those things should actually be paid for. With that, happy to take questions.
Questions, Mr. Burris.
Mr. President.
Ms. Wiles.
I'd make a motion that we approve transfer TA-23-19.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve transfer TA-23-19. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six zero. Council consider transfer TA-24-19, appropriation transfer in the general fund to realign appropriation expenditures for 2019. Mr. Burris.
Council members, this final transfer resolution deals with the general fund and deals with stuff aside from what we already talked about with the police department. So this is different issues. This is connected to a resolution that was approved at a prior council meeting that gave the controller authority to do small transfers under $50,000 at the end of the year to make sure there's appropriation authority to align with all of the spending. So you might have heard Mr. Spalding talk about the fact that there's a bunch of different buckets within the city's budget and all of those buckets have to have some amount of appropriation authority remaining at the end of the year. They can't be overspent. So this resolution is similar in that it's some of the same type of year-end budget cleanup issues. However, in this case, these are items that are over $50,000 and therefore still require council approval for us to move forward. So these are basically broken up into four different issues, which all have a similar story about why they ended up being spending above the appropriation level. The first relates to deferred compensation match for city employees. The second is utility bills that are paid out of the maintenance department's budget. Third is contractual spending from our department, OFA. And finally, the fourth one relates to legal service charges. So in all these cases, these are things that previously were paid out of a variety of different places in the budget, so there wasn't really good data on what the consolidated spending would be on that item. So as the budget was realigned, these are just things where we didn't really know what the right number to plug in was. And hopefully, that said, there won't be these specific set of issues coming up in 2020. But that said, there's, these transfers, clean them up for 2019. In terms of where the appropriation authority is coming from, it's coming from a variety of different places. You have that, there's a spreadsheet attachment in your packets that sort of shows, these are all places where there's going to be appropriation authority left at the end of the year that's available for transfer. So with that, happy to take questions.
Any questions, Mr. Burris?
Mr. President.
Ms. Wiles.
I'd make a motion that we approve transfer TA-24-19.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve transfer TA-24-19. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Council comments.
Mr. President.
Ms. Wiles.
I just want to go back and clarify that this coming Friday night, we're going to have the lights over Seminary Park. That celebration will begin at 6:00. There truly will be a wonderful celebration of the improvements to that park and with the ribbon cutting at 5:45. So we hope that lots of residents of the City of Noblesville will come out and join us for that.
They also will have a trolley running to downtown and out to Federal Hill where the ice skating rink will be going on and all kinds of activity downtown Noblesville. Any other council comments?
Mr. President, I just wanted to commend Patty Johnson and her crew and all the people that have been doing the leaf pickup in town because it is really, I think the new equipment that we purchased this year is really, is really working. They're doing a great job. I just wanted to say thanks. They're doing marvelous work.
If you get behind one of the old leaf trucks and get behind one of the new ones, it's night and day difference.
They can move quickly.
They were, they were a good investment.
Mr. President, I just want to make one comment. I want to commend Mr. Cook for taking the initiative and leasing that parking for the holiday season, at least through the end of the year, so that there's more parking available downtown. So I want to give him some kudos for taking the initiative and making that happen. I second the leaf truck.
Second leaf truck. Any other comments? With that, do I have a motion?
Some move.
Been moved, adjourned, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are done.